I would let the Parsons family know that you're more than welcome to stay for the entire meeting, but the fun part is over. So, stay at your... Normally, there's a mass exodus after the presentations.
Thank you, Ms. Minnis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay. At this time, we will have the public comment period. Of course, we reference General Statute 115(c)51. And Ms. Teresa Riddle, she's the local chapter president of the NCAE, would like to make a presentation.
First of all, I am Teresa Riddle, and I am a public school educator. And I just happen to work in Alexander County at East Alexander Middle School. And I hope to be an advocate for always for public education. On March the 23rd of this year, at our North Carolina Association of Educators Convention, the Alexander County Association of Educators received the Rodney Ellis Professional Courage Award for standing up for public school students last year May the 16th of 2018 at the March for Students Rally. And then we did receive that award. And I wanted to let you know that Alexander County Public School employees were able to participate on this day because of the support from Alexander County Schools and its school board. As one of these employees who participated, I wanted to say thank you. And I view this award not just for Alexander County Association of Educators, but for all who took part, whether they were able to go to Raleigh that day and march, or maybe they just were here in support. With the hard work not only that day, but through the summer and on into November, and we all know what happens in November, supporters of public education have been successful in some areas to start the return of North Carolina public schools to pre-recession levels. And we believe it is time, once again, for a day to celebrate the General Assembly's passage, because there was passage that day, that's one of our successes, and their commitment to a strong public education system in North Carolina. It is called five issues in one day. On May the 1st, we want to take action again. We have five demands: a $15 minimum wage and/or a 5% raise for all personnel, even those that are retired; to fully fund, support personnel, whatever entity that support is, from TAs to school nurses to psychologists to social workers, whatever; to restore pay for advanced degrees; and to reinstate retirement benefits for future educators in the state of North Carolina. And they do want to expand Medicaid to make sure that all students are covered in health programs. I ask you, on behalf of the Alexander County Association of Educators, all public school employees of Alexander County, and their students and parents, to support our May 1st Day of Action in whatever way is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
May I say something, Mr. Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
I was there last year, and I will be back this year marching on May 1st with you guys and so proud of all the teachers. It was like a flood of red. So, thank you, Teresa.
Any other comments from board members? Okay, at this time, we have before you the consent agenda, and could I have a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I would move to approve.
Have a motion seconded. Any discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Number three, we will recognize Mr. Andy Palmer.
The fun Mr. Andy Palmer.
The fun Mr. Andy Palmer. And we will have a fun presentation regarding Stony Point Elementary.
I hope everybody's doing well. Turn this this way. That's perfect. Let me make sure this is... Okay. All right, well, good evening, everybody. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to come out here tonight and speak to you guys, board members, Mr. Chairman, and certainly Dr. Hefner. This is a great opportunity for me to brag on Stony Point, and that is not a hard thing to do for me. I love Stony Point, and if you get an opportunity to come and visit, please, please do so. The best thing that we have there are our students. They are just sweet, and they care, and they love on you, and if you show up, they'll treat you just like family, almost immediately. So, take an opportunity and come on out and visit Stony Point. I will be, I'm not sure if it's five minutes, or seven minutes, or five slides, but I'm going to be quick. We put this together. I know your time is very valuable. You guys all have families, and you like to get home to them. Same is everybody here in the crowd, so I will be as quick as I can. But we do have a lot of good things. I turned it on with Dr. Clover. We do this every year, and we've been doing it since I got there. This is our faculty versus our 5th grade basketball game. It's an annual thing. We try to do it right around our March Madness, and we do it for various causes. This one was for our pointer pantry. So, these are hygiene items. I know you can't really tell by the picture in the corner there, but we collected close to 1,300 items, and those actually stay in-house, so toothpaste, shampoo. So, they stay in-house, and if anybody gets on a little bit of hard times, and they can come in and they shop in our pointer pantry. And the staff basically charges what we say is a one-item admission to come in and go to the game, but we always end up collecting well over the 242 kids that we have at the school. And this year was absolutely wonderful. It was 1,280, and you can see by the pictures, the students in the stands, they have a great time. They actually made some signs this year. And then you can see one of our students doing the jump shot. And then if you can, like, look at the one picture there, we had to recruit some extra help, and that's Danny Stike Leather. I mean, he's in our building, so we technically can, we can claim him. He's a good ball player. What it is, is we need the people to show up and play for us, and he does a real, real good job. And again, it's just a matter of collecting those items, which is, which is what we do this for. And then all the fun that we have with it is just kind of the icing on the cake. You can go ahead. I don't know if it's going to go. There we go. These, right here, and I know you're looking at pictures of people, but these are staff members that we have been able to work into our building through various ways, I guess is the best way to say it. You can see that's Officer Bowlen there. Boy, did we get lucky. We split Officer Bowlen with Hit Night, so we get him two, two and a half days a week. And nothing makes me happier when I'm doing my rounds through the building, and I'm passing him going the other way. He has really jumped in, really fit in. He actually does a great job trying to connect with the kids, which is, which is what you have to do. It's one thing to get to know the staff, but you really need to be at the kids' level so that they can, they can trust. And probably the most important thing is that you see a police officer in a good light, not, not sometimes how our kids see them. And it's a very positive role model, and he does a great job in the Sheriff's Department through a grant is how we were able to, to pick him up. And I just hope that we can continue that grant and keep him, and hopefully expand that to the other elementary schools, because he really does a great job. Mr. Taylor King there, we paid for him. He is a full-time teacher assistant that we paid for through some Title I money, and he works with our 3rd through 5th grade students, whatever they need. And we're talking about intervention, so if they're lacking this skill or lacking that skill, math, reading. But really, what it's come down to with Taylor, it's one of those things, is once, once you get that person in there and they start working with you and working with your staff, you can't afford to lose them then at that point. It becomes one of those. So, we're just hoping, fingers crossed, that we're able to keep him as long as we can, if we can keep that money for Title I. But he is pursuing his degree in teaching, and I really, truly hope that he follows through with that, because he's just got a gift for, for students and kids, and I hope that he can follow through with that, and actually, we can hire him someday in this system. Then you have Caitlin Sweet, and we picked her up part-time. She's 29 hours, and she works with our kindergarten through 2nd grade. And again, just a fabulous job. She, she just jumped right in. We were able to get her on in January, and she's doing the same thing, math, reading interventions, and doing an exceptional job for us. It's one of those things, and everybody in the room knows it. I'm not telling you anything, thing that you don't know. It's, it's, you need those bodies. You need people like that, because the teachers just can't get to everything that they need to do. And those two have done just a fabulous job. Then you have Mr. Gore, and that's communities and schools, so talk about feeling lucky. We got Sheriff's Department, we've got communities and schools, and all these people are making a huge, huge difference. For Mr. Gore, he meets with 25 of our students that, I don't, I don't know how to say it. You just don't have the time to get to all those students and develop those one-on-one connections, and that's what he does such a great job with on our building. And again, it's one of those ones that I hope to continue working with. He's a, he's a great, great role model for Stony Point. Our playground equipment, I know this doesn't seem like a big deal to you guys, but I, I'm, we are in the wrong business. That playground equipment that you see right there, we're piecemealing our, our, our equipment to our playground. That's how we're trying to build it. We haven't got a big grant or anything like that. But the equipment that you see there is, it's two new pieces. It's the stuff to the left there. The kids are standing on it, and that one's actually spins around. It's like a miracle round that's safe. But that was $5,000 for that stuff, and maybe a little bit more once we install it. But the kids have enjoyed it, and we're going to continue to try to get a piece every year, and this is through our PTO. And you can see some of the stuff that we, we've done, and I know that I've talked to you guys about this, but we were able to put a basketball court in a few years ago, and then our, our outdoor classroom as well. We put that in a couple of years ago, and this is all through our PTO. So, if you guys know Maria Lackey, that is our president now. Shannon Dyson has stayed on, just to kind of guide her through that first year, but Maria Lackey is the one that is doing it this year. She's doing a fantastic job. Please let her know that. The goal is, again, to try to get another piece of equipment, and you can tell by the smiles that nothing makes their day more than something different out there that they can actually get on and play on. Oh, our maintenance department. I know, again, here's a picture of a sidewalk. You know, what in the world? This is, this is ridiculous, but it's the small things. That's what I'm figuring out. And what we have here is a sidewalk that, over the course of probably 50 years, had pushed up about an inch. This was a main walkway into that side door right there for lunch, coming to the cafeteria, coming from the gym, whatever it might be. I'm probably 40 yards away during car duty, and it was probably once a week you'd hear a kid just taking a tumble. Well, I honestly believe that the maintenance department could not fix that. There was no way. And Barry was out there one time, and I ran up by him, and he said, "Oh, yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll turn that in. I'll, I'll check on that for you." And I thought, "Well, that's the end of that. Thanks, Barry." Sure enough, that Friday that we had that workday, he was out there, and he grinded that thing down, and...
Wow.
Yeah, and that's what it's all about. And it just absolutely blew me away that he would remember that and come back and do that for our school. And I just can't, I can't brag enough on him and the maintenance department for always showing up and getting stuff done. The other one is that little roof there over that door. That's our before and after-school care, and you can see that there's nothing that connects to that, so if it was raining, that is the only way to go into our cafeteria. So, we always had to send a student through the rain to open the door to get into our building. Well, they fixed that, too. They put that little bit of a roof up, and it has made a huge difference, not only for our students, but that's where our before and after-school care is housed. So, our parents now actually have a place where they can stand under when they're coming in as well. So, thank you to our, our maintenance department. Our Walk of Fame, this is our, this is the last slide that we have here. I know that I've reported this to you guys as well, but we've, we've kind of, we've morphed a little bit. We've used it to try to cut down on our leave-earlies and our tardies. What this is, is at the end of every nine weeks, we celebrate, and we roll the red carpet down the hallway. We invite all the parents to come into the building, and they line the hallway. Then we take all the classes, because we do say K2, then, or K1, then 2nd through 5th would line the hallway, so the kids come walking down through. And it's academic, it's attendance, and it's character traits. That's what we've done. And then we've moved also to the leave-earlies and the tardies, which were just killing us. We could not figure out a way to try to reduce those, so we've attached it to the Walk of Fame. One of the criteria to walk is, yes, you have to have good grades or the attendance, but you also have to have not left or been tardy three times in that nine weeks. And at the midway point, when I talked to Dr. Curry and Dr. Hefner, we, we saw some results. Now, are we killing it? No, no, we're not. But, but we've seen a little bit of a difference, and if it, if it all adds up, it'll come down to probably anywhere from 50 to 100 that we'll save for a year. So, I consider that a pretty good success, if those numbers play out. But the, the excitement that you can see in their faces, and then the best part is the, the parents. I don't know how they do it, but they, they show up, and they, and they support us for that Walk of Fame. And it's seven to 10 minutes, maybe at the most, and they still come out, and they really, really appreciate it that we are celebrating their students. So, like you guys said, celebrating is probably the best thing to do. Same thing for us. But I do, I'll, I'll invite you guys again. That goes without saying for certainly you guys, but if, if you can, get over there. Again, the best thing we have going for us, and our faculty is amazing, our whole staff is, they are unbelievable. But the, the students are, are where it's at, and I would love for you guys to come out and meet some of the students that we have there. Guys have any questions?
Questions, call me.
Nice. Great presentation.
Very good.
I couldn't agree more that it's about having bodies, caring bodies that are in there to, to connect with these kids. And a lot of times, you'll hear some famous person being interviewed, and who was the most influential, or what was the teacher, and it's these people that, that are going to help those kids in the long run.
You never know who's going to make that decision.
You never know.
You're absolutely right.
So, good job.
Thank you.
At this time, we will recognize Ms. Macy Jones, Head Start Director, Alexander County. Head Start update.
Good evening, everyone. On March 20th, we received notification from the Department of Health and Human Services that our duration grant had been approved. I believe that Dr. Hefner shared that with you through email. The grant was in the amount of $579,453. And this grant includes six new buses, buses, which should be here the end of May. Now, I don't have any control over Chevrolet Company, but that's what we've been told. And right here, I just need to go ahead and thank John and Dee for all their help, for everything that they did, because it always helps to have someone that can talk the language with Roy Parks at Thomasville Buses. So, thank you, John, and thank you, Dee, for your help. The grant also include, included a position for a behavior therapist. I'm not sure if any of you've had the chance to watch the documentary, Resilience. It talks about the biology of stress, and in that, it talks about having a drama teacher who works with children through art therapy and helps them resolve their, their problems and their stress. So, we want to model something like that. I've been talking with Dr. Hefner, Dr. Hilton, about what that might look like, and a few other people as we work on the job description for that, to work with our Head Start and NC pre-K children. We were also able to ask for six teacher assistants, and I know that sounds like a lot of teacher assistants, but those people will be divided between Stony Point and Quickenburg Schools, because we will have two dismissal times. We have a 1 o'clock dismissal time for 37 children, and we'll have a 2:45 dismissal time for 63 children. And so, it's going to be kind of hard to have somebody be on a bus from 7 to possibly 3:30 or 4:00, you know, it makes their day longer. And also, we've talked about that some of our folks don't begin their route where they work. So, how would we get them back and forth to where they need to be to their vehicles? So, those are some of the things that we had to talk about in our grant. The grant also includes, as I had mentioned before, when I came to you and asked for approval to submit it, an increase for staff, and that does exclude me, but a 3% increase for staff for their additional duties. The original request from DHHS was for 45 students. That's what they told us to apply for. But while on the phone with my program specialist and a representative from the Department of Health and Human Services, I was instructed at that time to add an additional 18 children to the 45. So, it's not something that I, I knew ahead of time, that I could share with you ahead of time. It was just in that spur of that moment that she said, "You know what? Let's add an additional 18 children to this." So, again, 63 children will stay until 2:45, and 37 children will leave at 1:00. I had one manager in the office during that call with our program specialist, and this program specialist and the lady in the regional office in, in Washington, didn't give us a whole lot of change, time to make changes to the original request. So, it was a quick turnaround time. So, that's after the meeting with the managers, we decided that we could make it with four teacher assistants and not the six. And I went over this with Dr. Hilton. I don't know if she remembers, because I've been in their, in her office so many times, but we decided that we could probably make it with four instead of six, so I've asked to make a budget adjustment. And my regional office representative has talked to me about that and told me some things that I need to do. So, I'll come back before you next month with that information, and I'll be talking to, to a Dr. Hilton as well. I met with Dr. Chlor, and we talked about how to proceed with the hiring of the additional, the staff. I know we don't have a lot of time left for this year, but I still need to move forward with making sure that I advertise and show that I am making an effort to get those positions filled. And the regional office knew this when they sent the grant in mid-March. They knew we did not have a lot of time. I wish they worked a little bit on a different time schedule, but they don't. Okay? So, I am working on that. I do plan to send a survey home on Friday to find out which parents are interested in their child or their children staying until 2:45. And if we get that information back, I hope, in a timely manner, we hope to extend the date starting in May, from May until the end of the year. And Matt, I know you've heard all this before at Policy Council the other night, so it's redundant for you, but that's, that is our hope, and we're going to try to start that in May. So, I'll give you another update at the May meeting. Then on Friday, March 22nd, Dr. Hefner and I received a notice of preliminary non-competitive determination. And so, I just sent her an email, and I said, "This simply means that the Office of Head Start has determined that we should not have to recompete for our next five-year grant cycle against anyone else that may be interested in having our grant. If we continue to operate within the next year without any issues, without anything going wrong," that they say that we, that our grant will not be opened up for others to compete for our grant funds, that it should just remain with the Alexander County Board of Education.
For five years.
For five years.
That's great.
Unless they determine something goes wrong during that five years. But as of today, we do not have to recompete for our grant funds. So, that's, that's good news. My program specialist was even excited on the phone about that. She hadn't received that notification. And so, when I told her, she was excited about that. So, what that means for the board is that if you have goals for us, you have goals for our Head Start program for this next five years, if you will share those goals with us, share that with Matt, because he is our liaison, and then he'll bring that information back to Policy Council, and we'll talk to Policy Council about how we need to fulfill those goals that you have for our program. On March the 30th, I submitted the refunding application for 1920. I submitted it at 9:30 at night with two hours to spare, just want you to know. So, I got it in on time. The application did include that waiver that I asked you about for the non-federal share. And then on April the 1st, I submitted a waiver for the 1819 school year as well, and you'd already given your prior approval for that at the January meeting. I waited until I had the additional amount for the non-federal share or the duration grant, and included that in that amount. Okay? Any questions for me? I have that amount if you want it. It was $323,912. That's the waiver amount. $323,912.
Basically, first of all, I enjoyed going to the policy. It was nice seeing the community getting involved in that. But could you just talk, because I'd be interested, because I didn't ask it then. Is the goal of the government to go all the kids to 2:45 eventually?
That is the goal. And that came out several years ago, and they gave us a timetable, and they said by 2021, part-time programs like ours should be serving full-time. So, they started offering programs money, and they say they offered it, but they were really strongly suggesting that programs pursue going full-time. And our parents have really embraced that, because a lot of them have children in the elementary schools where we're located, and some of them transport their children to and from school, and they like having the option of picking up their preschooler at the same time they're picking up the child that's in the elementary school, the grades. So, we hope that next year, we'll get the opportunity to expand for the other 37 children.
Any other questions for Ms. Jones?
Nope.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I thank Dr. Hilton, Dr. Hilton, too, for all that she does, because I'm in and out for all of this all the time.
Okay. Out of C, I'll recognize Mr. Harry Schrum, Facility and Structures Board Member.
I've talked with Dennis Johnson a couple of times over the past few weeks, and he, they've called for a final inspection on the, the new fire department. And I talked to Bill, who's Chief Building Inspector. Talked to him yesterday, and, and on the final inspection, there were just a few punch li- and on the final inspection, there were just a few punch list items, nothing, nothing very, you know, nothing concerning. Uh, and they're in the process of taking care of those punch list items, and we'll have a certificate of occupancy hopefully in the next few days, and plan to be out of the building. Their plan is to be out the end of this month, so that they also would like to have their next, um, porta-pat fundraiser in their new building, which is scheduled for the first of May. So, uh, it's looking up right now, so. And I've looked over the punch list, and, uh, I feel, feel good about it, been out quickly, so.
Okay, that's.
That's the update.
Good news. Thanks for the update. This time, I'll recognize Dr. Hefner for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Odom. Um, this report includes a variety of dates. You know that we're getting to the time of year when we have a lot of events. So, I'm going to ask Deborah to upload it to the agenda, so you can print a hard copy if, if you choose to do that. But, uh, I'm going to start by just reminding everybody that we moved the retirement reception from the June board meeting. We did that last year, and we have a date for the retirement reception. It's going to be May twenty-eighth. Uh, we will be, uh, holding that event at the ACHS cafeteria, and it starts at six o'clock. So, again, that's May twenty-eighth at six at the high school cafeteria. This week is National Assi, excuse me, this week is National Assistant Principals Week, and the National Association of Secondary School Principals and the American Federation of School Administrators declared this week a week of celebration for assistant principals. We are going to honor and recognize them for their contributions to our schools and certainly to the success of our students, and I hope you will make time this week to extend a special thank you to all of our assistant principals. We, as of today, established a date to visit Sugarloaf Elementary School. That date will be Monday, May sixth, and we will meet in the school's office at eleven-thirty that day. Again, Sugarloaf, visit Monday, May sixth at eleven-thirty. The formal budget request to the Alexander County Board of Commissioners for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year is due by April thirtieth. Sharon Mahaffey and I met with the Budget Committee on March eighteenth, and that was just to talk about some initial things that we think will happen, such as increases in, uh, benefits, such as retirement percentages and healthcare costs. Uh, we have not received any kind of formal notification of any of that information. We have not received anything as far as teacher al, allocation numbers or anything of that nature. But regardless, our request to the Commissioners will still be April thirtieth. That means that we need to have another meeting to finalize what we will formally ask for, and I would ask the Budget Committee to check your schedules and let me know if you can meet on Monday, April twenty-ninth at five-thirty. Monday, April twenty-ninth at five-thirty. All right, and as I said, all this, uh, will be in an attachment to the agenda, so you can run a hard copy. I wanted to let you all know that yesterday, Sharman Frizell and I met with members from the Department of Transportation and an engineering firm called Accelerate Engineering, and it was actually a follow-up to a meeting that we held last May to talk about traffic congestion at Bethlehem Elementary School. The individuals in attendance, Kim Hinton with the North Carolina Department of Transportation, Gavin Tang from Accelerate Engineering, and Eric Thomas from Accelerate Engineering, uh, we met to review the executive summary. That has been uploaded to the agenda, so you can read that summary. But on the last page of the summary, you will see an aerial shot of the Bethlehem school campus. And the purpose of the meeting, um, they actually conducted a travel study, and they, um, used a drone and, and used human beings to do all kinds of traffic counts to see what could possibly be done to lessen the congestion on Highway one-twenty-seven and Bethlehem School Road, because some of you have fielded calls from angry parents and angry residents at a variety of our schools. And this was a follow-up, uh, to that study that was done last May. The good news is that, uh, one of the recommendations that was shared was actually something that, uh, that we had discussed and had actually sought, uh, quotes for paving and, and different things, so that we can change the car rider traffic flow at Bethlehem. The best news is, from yesterday's meeting, Kimberly Hinton with the Department of Transportation said that there is a possibility that the state will pick up maybe all the cost to that on-site, um, change, uh, you know, what needs to happen. And if you will look at the aerial, what was proposed is that what is currently the bus parking lot, that would, the buses would all be moved to the backside of the building. And you can see back there that they are proposing doing something similar to a cul-de-sac right there, a turnaround, so that the buses would come in that back entrance, they would load, they would unload, excuse me, go around the little cul-de-sac, and then go back and back into the parking place. And then in the afternoons, the buses would stay stationary. We would load the buses as they are parked, as it's shown. We don't have that many buses at Bethlehem, but needless to say, that's what it would look like. And then they would certainly exit the campus and get back out on one-twenty-seven. Uh, then, that means that we could change the traffic flow, because you don't mi, you don't mix cars and buses, i, if you can help it at all, because that's just asking for problems with students trying to get into either one of those, a car or a bus. So, then the bus, the bus lot would be turned into two lanes of traffic flow that would snake around in that parking lot and would come back up to where the shrubs are on the bank. It would involve some, um, engineering work there, because the elevation is different in that parking lot. When you go to Bethlehem, it's obvious when you park in front of the school that that's higher than it is down at the bus lot. So, some work would have to be done there, but nevertheless, it would go back into a single lane and then snake back around, and we could load and unload cars, uh, in front of the school like we always have done there in a variety of stations. Sometimes they use as many as five or six stations to load, uh, not so much to unload every day. But, uh, anyway, we, we see great promise in this. I did share that the student's first day back in school will be August twenty-sixth, and that we need to move on this as quickly as possible. If the state can help us out, being a former principal, I know that routines, uh, and especially changes in routines are easier when you start out a school year that way. And it's almost like you just retrain everybody again, and, um, uh, I, I, I see great promise, especially in getting that traffic that has been backed up on Bethlehem School Road and one-twenty-seven, uh, in that area of the bottom parking lot that currently is used for buses. So, again, the executive summary is attached to your agenda. Do you have any questions about what was shared yesterday?
You may have said, and I just missed it, but, uh, do, do we know about how much log of, of vehicles we could have in that area that would be off of one-twenty-seven?
Well, when we conducted a trial run on one of, I believe it was an early dismissal day. Is that correct, Dr. Chlor? It was an early dismissal day. We took every staff member, an extra person that we could find with a car, and when you do two lanes of traffic in that lower lot, all the way till you get to where you would take out some of the shrubbery and do some grading work, and then it goes into a single file line, we could stack in seventy-eight cars in there.
My first response was sarcasm, and I, and I was gonna say, if only we could invent something that you could put thirty to forty students in, it would solve the problem. Has anyone ever done a study why, as someone who's from another area, and we all rode buses, why there's, uh, looked at the, why there's a movement away from buses? Is there a way to do a, what's that driving that factor?
Other than a parent survey, I, um...
Right, that's what I'm saying, with the parents, to see why they want to.
We, we could do that. Uh, I will tell you that they had gathered some statewide information, and they had taken schools, um, at about the same size of Bethlehem and counted the car riders, and it was anywhere from a hundred to a hundred fifty more car riders at Bethlehem than they have throughout the state at schools of similar size. So, uh, Matt, other than surveying parents, I, I don't know the answer to why we have so many car riders. All right, and then just the, the last couple of things. Uh, item number six on my report, a list of dates that span from spring break, dates all the way down to graduation on June seventh. So, I have a list of about eight very important dates and events there for you. And then lastly, I want you to know that tomorrow, I'm traveling to Raleigh. I sit on the Executive Board for the North Carolina School Superintendent's Association, and we have a meeting planned tomorrow with Governor Cooper. I have been asked, uh, to talk about school mental health and security resources in Alexander County and the needs that we have. So, thanks to Sharon Mahaffey. She has gathered information for me today with exactly how many people we have in roles such as social workers, counselors, psychologists, nurses, and resource officers, and what those, uh, recommended ratios are throughout the nation. And, uh, with the exception of the school nurses, we come up, uh, drastically short in every area. So, I'm going to make a plea to the governor about what we need to have safer schools and to better meet the mental health issues that we're seeing with children. So, I'm really looking forward to spending some time with him, and it's, um, it's a good opportunity for the superintendents to get to speak directly to the governor. So, do you have any questions? And, and I have on the list that you will receive, uh, the topics that we will discuss with him tomorrow. State investment in school facilities, principal pay scale, Senate Bill six thirteen or school calendar, school mental health and security resources, school performance grades, out-of-state teachers and licensure, the governor's commission on a sound, basic education, and then, of course, uh, the hottest topic of, of the week last week was the classroom supplies bill that, um, where money would be channeled directly to classroom teachers. Do you have any questions? Busy day tomorrow. Busy day on the road tomorrow, on the road again. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hefner. At this time, we'll recognize our chief financial officer, Officer Ms. Sharon Mahaffey. We have some unfinished business regarding second readings of, uh, board policies, proposed board policies.
We have eight board policies. They're up for second reading tonight. Um, I have received no comments or concerns over the last month, and would ask that you approve these on second reading.
We have a recommendation from Ms. Mahaffey. Can I have a motion to the effect?
Motion to approve on the second reading.
Second. Have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. And, uh, Ms. Mahaffey, if you'll continue with new business and, uh, new policy revisions.
We have three policies up for first reading tonight, and I hope this is a trend that's gonna continue, uh, with fewer policies to review. Uh, but anyway, I'll bring those back next month. I'll get input and bring those back next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mahaffey. At this time, we'll recognize Mr. John McCurdy, our Director of Transportation. And, uh, I see Ms. Dee Watts is here, too. They've been with us a long time. Helped us through many a storm, so, uh, you have the floor, Mr. McCurdy.
John, John, the first thing for you is the Activity Bus Agreement before we start this. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Dr. Hilton. First, we do have the agreement with the YMCA for this summer's, uh, approval. Um, I ask for your approval on it. The only thing that has changed will be the operating dates of June tenth through August twenty-third, and there also has been a change in the, uh, per mile cost of a dollar and forty cents per mile. I can tell you, from last year, the YMCA ran twelve-hundred-and-one miles, uh, what they used, and it was like a total of fifteen-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars, is what we just lost. So, I ask for your consideration.
Okay. Um, you have the recommendation from Mr. McCurdy, uh, regarding the agreement with the YMCA. Can I have a motion to the effect?
Leave the proof.
In a second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Mr. McCurdy, uh, continue, please.
Okay. Fortunately, that was a short presentation. I'm afraid this may, this one, next one may not be. I was asked to look in, do a study on ways that we could save some money on our budget transportation. And, as you know, the fuel prices that have increased, that we can't change that. And I've talked about with higher fuel prices, that means rubber for tires, that means tires go up. So, with all that being said, all we can do is reduce our fleet of buses. Otherwise, that would be less gallons of fuel we use, less tires, less parts. I'll give you a little bit of background. You don't have this, uh, with you tonight. Back in October of two thousand and nine, uh, our student count we take each year, we, uh, transported twenty-four-hundred-and-eighty students on sixty-one buses. We ran seven-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-eight miles. As of today, um, we now run approximately eighteen-hundred-and-thirty-eight students on buses. Thirty-seven-hundred-and-twenty-four miles per day is how many miles our buses run. We're using fifty-one buses. That comes to a total of six-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand miles a year that we run on our buses. So, as you can see, how the student count has dropped from, while we're hauling down about six-hundred-and-forty students since two thousand and nine. I just wanna give you a little bit of background on that before we proceed. Okay, bus consolidation. Let me pass these out right. This is not in your page.
Okay, one, Mr. O. Okay? Thank you. Did you?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, you will go to the next one. Okay, um, this is showing the current bell times used, um, between, uh, middle schools and elementary schools. What we are, what we are suggesting to do is consolidate middle school children with elementary school children. And, um, there will have to be a stagger of like twenty-five minutes travel time between the schools to make this happen. You, you have got before you the new bell time proposal. Show you a little bit about what we have. We'd have to, uh, split that up. Okay, and like I said, Ms., uh, Watts is with me tonight, in case you have any questions as far as looking at student stops or where schools are located, uh, about why we came up with the middle elementary instead of doing a middle high school consolidation. On the routes, the ratio, as you can see from our eighteen-nineteen data, would be approximately seventy percent elementary students to thirty percent, uh, middle school on each bus. And this would eliminate, uh, multiple bus travel to remote locations with the same stops. Otherwise, siblings that ride at the same stop of middle and elementary would do one stop for the bus, which would be a savings. And then the distance between elementary and middle schools would allow sharing of the buses. Drop off middle school students, then pick up more elementary students as we head towards elementary schools. I'll give you a little bit of a scenario how this would work, what we've talked about. For instance, the morning run. Okay, buses will go out to their further stops and work their way back towards middle schools and drop. Proceed towards their assigned elementary schools, picking up students as they go. Drop, then they would deadhead back to the middle schools. Okay, in the evening, buses will load at the middle schools, proceed towards their assigned elementary schools, dropping students as they go. Load at the elementary, then finish the reading routes, then they would deadhead back to the middle schools. Load at the elementary, then finish the reading routes, then they would deadhead back to the middle schools. I know this is a lot of information. You have a lot of questions. Hopefully, we can answer part of it. What this would mean is all the buses would be stationed at the middle schools for that. There'd still be 14 buses for high school. It would run its own separate route for high school students. We would have 15 buses parked at East Middle School and 14 buses at West Middle School. It would be divided up to where your feeder schools would be. Ellendale, Bethlehem, and Whittenburg to the west. And then, of course, Sugarloaf, Hiddink, Stony Point, and Tatersville would be for the east side. We'll head to the next. Okay, that one, of course, says park seven buses. Should be eight. From the 1819 data we get, we believe we can park eight buses instead of seven. We have got information from a graph you'll see a little bit later that shows that savings per bus of approximately $25,000 to $30,000. It's also the student per student count for refund rates that's figured from DPI. The advantages, as you can see here, drivers from closed routes would be available for substitute driving. Of course, we know that's a big problem in Alexander County is getting bus drivers. And we're not alone. This is statewide. I've talked to Caldwell. They're having the same problems. You just can't find permanent bus drivers. So, of course, our TAs and custodial and food service staff is having to fill those gaps. Hope of this would reduce overtime pay for drivers. And this would help on our EC routes, be a better compliance on our times getting these students to the schools where they have to go. Okay, on the advantages. Of course, several stops can be made between the elementary schools and the middle schools, which will reduce ride times. You'll have students that will be not having to ride the buses long because they're going out by their house. We can stop and drop them along. We've just got that 25-minute window, though. We can't spend too much time because we've got to beat those bell times, you know, at the schools to get them there. So we'll have to, you know, be careful on that. Of course, this will affect our state efficiency rates. With less buses on the road, it should help that quite a bit. As you know, we have to inspect buses every 30 days. And that includes weekend days. It's not just 30 actual school days. So that would be less travel time for our trucks going out to the schools. They'll be going to one location, working at one school all the time. And, of course, our field truck, same way. He's not running all over the county. He's just going to East Middle and High School to do his fueling. The one big thing on this, too, would be, of course, the middle schools don't have access to drivers like the elementary schools do, as far as TAs. But the middle schools would have access to those feeder schools for substitute drivers' lists. So they would have to draw off of those elementary schools. Disadvantages. Of course, the deadhead time, there's really no way around that. We're going to have to deadhead back after we drop off that last run. The only other thing would be on these elementary-only release days, there's 10 of those built into the counter each year. So that will require double running. So that would be one thing would be a disadvantage. Another big thing is field trips for YALI buses. A lot of schools do use YALI buses to run field trips. And they would have to, you know, schedule that with the middle schools about coming to pick up a bus, unless they want to use an activity bus. So that's the thing. The cost of the YALI bus for an activity trip is $1.56. That's set by the state. Our activity buses, wide activity buses with local is $1.40 per mile. This next screen, that's showing you the breakdown we give from DPI for the refund rates. And that's how we figure that $1.56. This is some of the information we went on to try to figure out savings per bus for doing this. I talked to Kevin Harrison, the DPI. He's the head down there, and he says he cannot give me any definite figure on how much we park the buses or save. But we had, we've come up with some figure that we think will be pretty close. Because as you can see, the cost per pupil, $720 per pupil. And this other shows $2.18 per mile for the refund rates. I believe that's all I had, so I don't entertain any questions that we may or may not. Like I said, Ms. Watts is with me. If you want to see some graphs showing the student stops. What is happening is our elementary schools, they're the furthest out. And when you take Ellendale, Sugarloaf, Hiddink, and Stony Point, they reach out to those furthest areas like Linnys Mill, Hidden Valley. I mean, you don't want to talk, we go into Ireland County and Hiddink and Stony Point to come back in to Alexander on Law's Lane and Kennington Lane down in that area. And that's a long ways out. So we need to go out there with one bus, come back this way, picking up all those students we can, as far as the middle and elementary. We've got some elementary buses. I know one in Sugarloaf in particular, it's a 72-passenger bus. And when it comes back in, it's got 25 kids on it. But yet, to meet those time restraints for bell times, we can only run so long we've got to get back. So by doing this, that's how we're saving and loading those buses, getting more efficient, in fact.
Or is there a concern that some of our drivers would hit that 30-hour mark that would not be hitting it before?
Well, actually, that was talked about and hoping that we can get some permanent drivers and have these longer routes and maybe build off of benefits where we can get some permanent drivers that will stay with us. You know, especially in Bethlehem area, there's some of those routes up there that's something like an hour long. I mean, we go out some of those developments and pick up a whole load and come back in. We're loaded. And that's, you know, that is an issue because the drivers say, well, I don't want to get up at five o'clock in the morning just to run a higher route. So by expanding that and giving them some more time, whether it does meet the criteria for the benefits or not, we're hoping to get better, I would say, quality of drivers, that drivers will stick with us. And there's no really golden answer for how to get bus drivers. I mean, it's a problem everywhere. And I really don't believe that it's the pain of money as much as it is people just don't want to drive buses like they used to.
Well, there's a whole, it's so much responsibility when they're driving that bus. And, you know, if you, when you tell people what the hourly rate is, you know, weigh against the responsibilities.
And there's a lot of upfront costs now with drivers. You have to get a CDL permit. You have to have it for two weeks before you can, you know, finish your driving. You have to have DOT physical lounge. That's a requirement. And that has to be renewed every two years. And, of course, your CDL's good for three years for your pocket card. And so it's an expense upfront. And a lot of people will tell you they don't have the money to pay that upfront. So that's where, you know, we asked the schools to talk about it, and possibly they can help with some of that, you know, if they want to drive a bad man.
Board members, Mr. McCurdy made this presentation to all of the principals at the March Principals Meeting. And the only real concerns that I heard that day, and correct me if I'm wrong, for the directors, the two middle school principals, I guess, initially thought that finding sub-drivers for a fleet of 14 or 15 buses, they thought that all that responsibility would fall to their APs. And that almost felt like a full-time job. But what we shared is that there are a variety of options as far as if you want to assign an elementary principal certain buses in that fleet, that if the driver's out, it's your responsibility to get those subs. You know, you can share that responsibility. But, John, correct me if I'm wrong, that was really the biggest concern the day that you shared this with principals that I heard.
That's all we just talked about, really, I guess.
Everybody certainly can do the math, and if it is $30,000 a bus, multiply that times eight, that's $240,000. And the purpose, the reason that Mr. McCurdy was given this assignment is that we are looking to cut costs in every way possible because there's no secret that our drain is in operating expenses. And so I certainly thank you. I thank Dee. I thank Dr. Chlor. It's been a team effort. But really, at this point, they're at a standstill. There is more work to be done. But they're at a standstill until they get a thumbs up or a thumbs down from you to continue.
Can I ask a few logistical? As somebody who doesn't know, do our elementary schools align perfectly with the middle schools? The way you were describing it, is all the elementary schools feed into the same?
Yes.
You see what I'm saying? Like, if there's not a split, that some from Sugarloaf go to one's middle school, some go to the other. So they're all aligned?
They have been aligned exactly the way they are right now.
I just didn't know that. So that's what I said. Sorry. That's logisticals for me. And then you mentioned the TAs from the elementary school being drivers. How are you, the buses are going to end at the middle school. So do they park a car and then drive to the elementary school for the workday and then leave early? And is that?
That's what would probably be what happened.
That's where they would leave from in the morning. So they would automatically have to drive their vehicle there. And then that dead time he talked about is that drive back to the middle school with no students on the bus. Their car would already be there, and then they would go to their elementary school.
So they would be arriving a little later in the school day than the bell time?
And in all honesty, that's what happens now with driving buses. You know, when you do both of those responsibilities to go and get the bus ready in the afternoons, there is some loss of time with children already.
And will this affect the Bethlehem discussion we heard from a minute ago? Because you won't be parking buses at Bethlehem anymore, correct?
It will not affect the traffic flow, that change in traffic. The only thing is, we wouldn't have to do anything to the parking lot in the back because buses wouldn't be parked there.
You wouldn't have to worry about bus parking anymore?
Right.
These were just...
Good, good questions.
Yes, ma'am.
As far as parent-wise, pros and cons, you know, for a parent. I know they could, they expect both, you know, middle school and elementary kids to get on the bus at the same time, which to me sounds like a good thing. What's the, is there any negative for parents?
Well, I don't love any, would not hurt any. Of course, this has just been put out, so we don't love it.
I can tell you some concerns that I anticipate. It's different. Some of our parents have never known a combined bus route, so it's different. And sometimes people do not embrace change. The second thing is that I think that some parents would have some apprehension with elementary and middle school students being together. However, when you look at that 70%, 30%, you're going to have fewer middle school students than you do elementary. But I anticipate those being the two biggest concerns for parents. But for some families, it helps, you know. There's a middle school child and an elementary child in the same home. There's none of that worry about, does the middle school student get home first to get the house opened kind of thing. They're right there together, so.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. McCurdy?
I just have one question. So it looks like, based on the proposed bell schedule, the middle school's going to lose 10 minutes a day of instructional time. And since we base our calendar, this may be moot, I guess, if the calendaring is turned back over to the local board. But is that 1,800-minute loss that the middle school's going to affect our? We base our, you know what I'm...
Our number of hours on the longest day. It will affect it some. Jessica, can you speak to us as far as?
My understanding, and again, we haven't proceeded with any sort of any great details, but my understanding is if it staggers us in the morning, it also staggers us in the evening. So the start times would change, but the length of day would not change. So those students would still be there that amount of time.
To me, it looks like the middle school's going to lose 10 minutes a day. And so that's roughly 1,800 minutes. And I guess my concern was with our school calendar and how we've got it based on the number of minutes and not the number of days. How is that going to affect the plan that we have in place with regard to protecting Easter week? Yeah, okay, protecting Easter week and that kind of thing.
Yeah, that would need to be something we have to...
We haven't gotten that far in calculating, but those are certainly things that we need to be cognizant of because this year, we used all but three days of the, I guess, if you want to call it banked time.
Right.
You know, so when you have a tougher winter, we get close with some of that. Yes, Dr.?
Can I say that when we were looking at bell times, we just shifted, and maybe it's the wrong representation, I'll have to look, but we just shifted and kept. That was the whole main thing, the same amount of time that we have in middle school this year. And the same length of day we have in elementary school that we have this year. So I'd like to look at this.
Yeah, this may be wrong, ma'am, but to me, it looks like they lose 10 minutes a day.
That's not what we're going to do.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Is there any, I have one other question. I'm sorry.
That's fifty cents.
All right, I'll put it in the kitty. Having served on the calendar committee, I know how difficult it is to accommodate everyone's needs. And parents, in addition to faculty, and, you know, this is going to impact teachers as well, I think, with their start times being a little bit later. I would kind of like to get some feedback from some parents and some staff, not just principals, about how it doesn't appear to be a drastic change, but 30 minutes at 7:30 in the morning, for me, is a drastic change. Just to get some other input besides us. You know, I don't know if you could maybe have the PTOs of each school, because those are parents. Look at it, and maybe their school improvement team. Just, you know, not, you don't want to open it up, I don't think, too much because no one's going to be perfectly happy with any change. But if we can get constructive feedback from some folks that are heavily involved with the school systems, it might tell us how this is going to impact them on a practical level.
As far as just dropping off and picking up children?
The bell times, I think, is always a, a change in the bell time seems to always be a big deal. It just does. That piece of it, I would like to know. Or the parents, if they had any thoughts, constructive thoughts on the actual combination of the middle with the elementary. Because you know that's going to be an issue with, for some folks, and understand, I understand that. So maybe just some way to get some, some practical feedback from the folks that this will impact would be, would be helpful.
Every school has a parent advisory board?
Yeah, I don't think we need to send home 5,600 surveys, but just some other input besides...
I think one of the bigger concerns there would be that if the middle schools do stay exactly the same amount of time for the day, then that moves them to 15 minutes earlier instead of five minutes earlier. So, and I know that that'll be a concern to some parents, would have been to me.
So I said, 30 minutes at 7 o'clock in the morning is a big deal to me because I'm not a morning person. But I think, I like what you're suggesting very much. I just think we needed a little, I personally like a little more information.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. McCurdy, for your presentation.
Can I have one other?
Yes, sir.
All I would ask is, we don't take too much time because we're on a real tight, tight schedule to be able to get these routes ready to build for the principals for the new school year. And we have other reports that's coming due that's going to take a lot of time on our side. So we need, you know, to have some kind of answer as far as saying if you would, please.
Yes, sir.
So the May meeting, the May meeting, would that work best, if you think?
Dee, is that enough time? I don't know that it is enough time.
Well, I don't want to say we're in a lull right now, but we have time now. We could be working on it where we can't, be doing some other things. So as soon as possible.
Do you need the consent of the board to proceed with an action plan? Just formulating your action, your plan of action, and then they could send out surveys or what have you?
Well, I guess we can, we can start on it. Our big thing is, we didn't want to get started on it, trying to be building all this, and then come right back and say, this ain't happening this out, you know. Because it is so much work to build those routes.
Were you looking for action?
The process is almost, everything up to this point, just to get you some information, can't carry. I have to, what is it all?
She can't copy it and paste it in, too.
It all has to start fresh again. So it's a, and it's a, it's a process. But, and like Mr. McCurdy said, there's, it's not, this is not...
and like Mr. McCurdy said, that there's, it's not, this is not the only thing that we're dealing with. There's a lot that happens at this point in the school year, um, with the Transportation Department. So a, an expedient decision, or a, any questions or anything that we can help with to help you make that decision, we will be glad to give you any information. We can't, we can't give you the parents' side, of course, because that's just gonna happen. We have combined, um, ele-, not elementary, middle school and high school routes in the past. We did East, and there was a small period of adjustment for parents, but after that little adjustment, they were very pleased. So I'm hoping that that situation will happen in this scenario, because it, it, it has significant savings for this school year.
Are you sending the early college kids home on the middle school buses? How's that working when they go out to the middle schools? Or are their parents just picking them up there?
That's just when they're not operating the regular high school. Those, uh, early college students are on regular high school bus routes.
Okay.
Um, the only time they utilize the, the middle school process is when they're not in school. And they are. If early college is running and the high school's not, then they use the middle school as a pickup point.
I know this is not Iredal County, but Dr. Chloer was hired from Iredal County, and she, um, served as an administrator there, but she's still currently a parent of a middle school student and an elementary student. And I'd like for you to speak, uh, just from a parental point of view.
And that, that's what I was hoping I would get the opportunity to do, because my daughter is in second grade, and my son is in sixth grade. And having a staggered time as a parent is a good thing, because it allows for, as a car rider, my daughter to be dropped off in the morning, and then my son can also be dropped off in the mornings. And I'm not having to worry about, and I'm kind of down buses, but I have to worry about one being one supposed to be on the bus while I drop the other one and whatnot. And, um, I choose to do that, because obviously I've been here early enough, so to drop them in the car line is what works best for us, as far as the time goes. But having that staggered entry, uh, start and ending of the day allows for the same thing. She gets picked up, and then he gets picked up. And for a parent who has a child in both levels, that has really been a helpful thing for me with my working times, work time, to be able to do that and still be to work on time. And, you know, I have to worry about my children being the whole time you're on the bus by themselves, because I, I can do that, I'll do that myself. But that's been really great, um, and has, had to work as an administrator with that schedule, and sharing lessons. We don't have any problems, it, it worked really well.
What was the start time at your school, at Cloverleaf Elementary?
My car line, I was out in my car line at seven thirty in the morning.
Yes, I thought so.
It was earlier than what was proposed in here. And I'm not a morning person either. When I first got that job, I said, there's no way I could get to work by six forty-five in the morning. But I got, I got used to it. Um, and, and then it worked. Our, our car line stopped at seven thirty, got the car deal, and we started our day. And then, you know, the other, the other school started later than us. We're proposing here to do this.
It's a flip-flop.
A flip-flop. You know, we also have to consider athletics and yes, you know, I mean, that's not the main thing, but it's a big deal. It's part of the end of time and all, making sure that we can still participate at times that they want to. Um, there's a lot of cost and things for a parent and a middle school to handle in doing this. But bottom line, and I believe in this, monetarily, this can heal for our county, if it doesn't reduce the need to have that much. But it does not, not influence.
Is there a way to reach out to, um, the, the potential impacted, um, parents through Dojo or Board Dogs or whatever media we use to communicate?
We don't have Dojo in all the schools. Uh, the only form of con, you know, consistent communication, I guess, would be through the call system. And what you can do with that, you can develop a survey, that when they pick up the call, they can actually answer some survey questions, but I'm not the expert in that. Renee would have to help us.
Um, the call notification system does allow for us to do the survey, and it's, um, basically a yes, no, one, two, three, a or a kind of option. Um, but I think we could, we'll somehow survey to, and utilize the call system.
Do you, do you think that's, and, and maybe my, my request is, is not warranted. I just think, I like the stagger time, I like the proposal, I, I love the presentation. I just feel like a change that is fairly significant, I would like, even if you just gave your, your parent advisory groups, what do you think about this? Get back to me in, in a week, or by next Wednesday. And if they don't get back to us, then it's, you know, just some shorter period of time, because I know they have a lot to do. I'm not trying to delay.
I'd like any feedback that we're going to get from parents. I'd like to have it before spring break. And spring break starts Good Friday, it's not this Friday, but next. So I need to reach out to the principals, and we need to come up with some sort of a, a quick turnaround plan, Renee, with how we'll get that feedback.
Yeah, and I like, I actually like what Karen just said, where you give them a period that they know that they can offer an opinion, rather than just a yes, no, because it has no qualitativeness. Do we have to have a special call thing?
I think we should. Um, possibly one day next week, prior to Good Friday, we'll call a special call meeting, uh, because this is an important matter. Um, and, um, and if we, we give, um, John and Dee a direction that they need to head in, we certainly do not want to delay their efforts. Um, and it is, uh, honestly, it is a time management and cost-saving, operational cost. You know, that, that's the whole premise for the, for the discussion. Uh, because, uh, as, as alluded to in the superintendent's report, with additional percentage requirement, uh, to, to go towards employer retirement match, meaning the, the amount that the local school unit pays toward, um, the retirement for, um, employees, and additional costs for healthcare, we're looking at an additional, I don't know, rough math, five hundred and eleven thousand. And you just can't pull those numbers out of the air, or, or pay those bills with good intentions. So, uh, uh, we're looking at every, every aspect of the operational cost of our school system. Um, so I, I think we owe it to, uh, to Mr. McCurdy and Ms. Watts to be, to sure ask the question, but sure not get, uh, hung up on, because this is not an anomaly, it's nothing new. I learned a lot of my vocabulary as an elementary school student.
That's our concern.
But I did it with high school students.
That's not helping.
You know, I think it served me well. So, but, um, I think we, uh, this is, we need to be transparent and open, and just let folks know that we're, we're trying to improve our efficiencies, because it has been asked of us, um, to continue. And it's not like we started looking for efficiencies yesterday. Uh, the problem is, is we can't raise revenue, and we can't sell enough donuts to, to fund our schools. Um, and we're, we're beholden to, uh, local government, state government, and federal government. We can't tax, and we can't, you know, if we were Soviet era, um, you know, if we were, if I were Stalin, I would seize your property just to, just to run the school system. But, but that's not how schools work. But, uh, one thing we do have, and, uh, a little op-ed since everybody else is talking, I was a, a student bus driver, my junior and senior year. And, uh, Mr. McCurdy has been with this school system a very, very, very long time. And he has helped, you know?
He didn't have to do all those varies, John.
Well, you know, not, not only has he taken care of our buses, um, he was a fireman, uh, for decades upon decades. And, and I know, I know for a fact, I know for a fact, because I saw him, that, uh, that he would be at a fire, and, and I might add, a career volunteer fireman, be at the fire at night, and then you'd see him working on the buses the next day. So, so we have a very, very dedicated, uh, staff, and, and, and we're asking them to, to, uh, reduce buses even more. Uh, in, in two thousand nine, they ran sixty-one buses. In the twenty nineteen, they run fifty-one buses. That's ten less buses, that's thirty thousand dollars a pop. Uh, and now they're proposing, at our request, to reduce it by eight more. So, you know, um, retraction and retreating is, is not always a good thing. And, um, but, um, you know, we have to do it. We, we actually have very little options. But, uh, if we could get them a, uh, a, a direction from this board, and, you know, I, I think part of our, our job as school board members is to make tough decisions that, uh, and we usually do a very commendable job of making people mine. You know, so, and, and this is different, this is different, but, uh, it's not like we're, we're, we're the first school system to ever consolidate bus routes.
I would like to also just add this. Uh, when we, when Sharon and I met with the Budget Committee, we did talk about, uh, using Habsent sales tags to make sure that every bus has a camera, a working camera on it. And, um, hopefully that would help parents with some of those fears, uh, maybe decrease some of those fears, if they have a working camera. Uh, for the most part, cameras capture the truth.
So Chairman, would, would, maybe if we could get some information back, maybe by Wednesday, and maybe do a brief, very brief special call meeting, even during the day on Thursday? Or in, in the evening, it doesn't matter. Would that?
It's fine with me.
Would that, that's probably...
So this Thursday?
No, I think she's meaning next Thursday, before spring break starts on Friday, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Twentieth?
Twentieth.
Will that suffice?
It's not the twentieth.
Eighteenth, okay.
That's a reluctant agreement.
I will not plead on Saturday.
I would like the seventeenth.
But I'm not...
I'm in Orlando.
Okay, so the seventeenth?
Yeah.
Of April, what time?
Cindy, can you?
That's a Wednesday, though, just so we're clear.
We've got interviews that morning, but eleven, they're eight-thirty, eleven-thirty for the toy, oh, you know, Teacher of the Year. But eleven-thirty, we're supposed to be done, so.
What if, what if we did a, a five-thirty on the seventeenth? Would that work?
That'd be good for me.
And if it's standing room only, we'll know that somebody paid attention to something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, and that's Wednesday, right?
Wednesday, seventeenth.
What's your concern?
My concern is that when you make this phone call to parents, if I were, and I am a parent, but, and I'm also a grandparent of kids that ride the bus, if I got a phone call saying, we're going to combine the middle and elementary bus kids on one bus, are you in or out, yes or no, with no explanation, no understanding of the possible seventy, thirty percent, and no explanation about the cameras? My answer is going to be no, period.
I think what we're, I think what we're going to have to do, Dee, is every school does have a parent advisory group.
A group, yeah.
And the principals have seen this presentation. We can make it available to them, and they can actually call a meeting of that group, where they can explain some of this and seek feedback. The only problem in all this is just, it's a quick turnaround to get it scheduled and get it back to us. No, it's okay, we get it. We get that it takes time to do what needs to be done on your end. But we will, uh, get on this, uh, first thing in the morning, okay?
I don't want a phone call going out to everybody.
No, I don't either. Everybody's gonna vote no. I mean, it's just gonna be, that's no information.
Well, we just need four out of seven here to vote yes, and it'll be okay. Next Thursday, hopefully.
Can you just verify that they're not losing time?
Yes, yes, we will also email, Dr. Chloer, if you'll email the correct times, exactly what, just email that to board members in the morning, okay?
Thank you.
We'll, we'll send them your time.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll recognize Ms. Jessica Anderson, our Director of Accountability regarding the early college calendar.
Thank you. So before you, you should have the proposed early college calendar for the nineteen-twenty school year. Um, it has a little bit more flexibility than the standard school year calendar. Not a whole lot, because we're still bound by the same number of, um, laws and required workdays. So I have before you the proposals that I've worked with the early college, who's worked with CBCC to develop.
Okay.
Any questions I may answer?
Board members, do you have any questions or comments regarding the proposed calendar?
No.
Okay. Now, have a motion regarding the proposed calendar?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, you have the Alexander County Early College Calendar.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll recognize Ms. Kathy Cotto, our School Nutrition Director, regarding our recommendation to roll over bids for twenty nineteen-twenty.
Thank you, uh, Board. Uh, I just wanted to bring to your attention that all of our vendors have offered to roll over our bids this school year. Praise the Lord, we're so excited. And with your approval, we would like to do this. That's the, uh, US Foods, the Smart Mouth Pizza Company, as well as our milk company.
Okay. You have the recommendation regarding the rollover bids. Any questions of the director? Comments? Smart Mouth Pizza's really good. Can we have a motion regarding the rollover bid proposal?
Motion to approve the, the rollover bid proposal as presented.
Second. Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion regarding the rollover provision carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll come to that time where, uh, we will, um, the board will enter into closed session to discuss personnel per North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one eight six. Do you have a motion to that take?
Summer.
A motion, take it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming in. Yeah, yeah, you know, like cough, cough drop.
Hey, don't worry about it.
Don't worry a thing about it.
So you're out there.
I was like, yeah, I was like, yeah.
We don't need a committee meeting, we need a special.
Yeah, I knew that was good.
I know.
I figured you conspired with them, so.
No, I'm sorry, but it's something that I'm really just looking at right now.
Okay, good.
Well, no, because that, the first thing I thought of was like, oh my gosh, then how are we gonna do our bank day? Yes. I know.
Presentation.
And you, you're right, I mean, I was trying to be diplomatic, but it's worth trying.